Sitting on there just in case they didn't get the email. But this is certain dead.
Yeah.
I can enjoy it.
And he says, I muted it that way we the communicate with anyone that comes in as they come in.
Okay. Can we put here now?
Yeah.
Good evening, Brian Barrett here. Jacob, are you there? Jacob? Robert? How you doing? Is Robert going to call in? Okay. All right.
Hi, Ryan. So how are you?
Good, how are you?
Ryan, can I get you any water or anything?
I'm good for right now.
Hello. Oh, lights are dying.
Well, it all depends sometimes, sometimes we can use it for a little better. Pretending from like without like some oil tanks. I don't know. No, and you're showering today. Why are you supposed to be four days? Yeah. Check out one. And we didn't even go to the bathroom. Okay. We need a, we need a. And what's. Thank you, Rob. $50, I got her back.
And it's. Bumpy then.
You know. There's something that are quiet up there.
Yeah. Probably for some.
That one will gain the.
I'm gonna go get some water anyway.
Well. Right, and there's light on like the longer face. The drink is rotten. Some colors. Mine are doing sick. What people leaving. Well, people bringing people off to their no one that they're in want of. And then you'll have, you know, you're getting rubbish.
Well, how are you?
Any other one? Not paying them and they're there for one of them.
Robert, is that you?
Hello, Ryan.
Hello.
Brian, Robert's not on the call yet.
Okay. He's probably having dinner.
Okay. We just. Speaking of my. It could be no much. I do. We do have no name.
I'll give her a hundred and two.
Father. Isn't it? Oh, 11:56. In that span.
No, we do. Thank you. For doing, thank.
Hello.
Hi, Robert. Thank you.
Just a test here.
Hola. Hola, Robert.
And Ray and I are listening in.
Good for you.
Pretty good connection.
Yeah. Well, hey, if you're gonna listen, stop that and listen.
Yes, I'm sure that she wants to attend this, this wonderful gathering.
Are you kidding me? He's torturing her again.
I know Julie adding to this thought work or thing that is here in my pile, but I even highlighted hi. And then I went, thanks. Hey, man, it was an old friend. Well, I apologize. Good to see you. I'll do what we can to get through it. I'm going to want to say on the nation. Before everyone started.
Put it on.
Yeah, thanks for doing this.
You know, you got the thing. I don't know, right? The last one.
You know. We go or what?
Yeah.
I'll call you and I'll set up a way for the interlock or we are the outer book.
Cool. And that's nice.
This one.
Yeah, no, well, definitely, yeah. No.
If anyone want to put over the phone, they can.
Anyone hear me? Is this working?
Yes, we can hear you just fine now, Robert.
Very, very clear, Robert.
Okay, I'm using headphones, so I wanted to make sure.
Huh? Yep.
Yipped they did going to the emails that's important. It's all delicious.
Take them. I'm gonna try to have one, James. Okay. That's kind of harsh.
It's pretty.
Oh, vamos a. No, it's the idea. Compartar, compa.
All right.
Here's a little. Are you not there? So.
Right.
Yeah.
You guys up? All right, cool. Good evening, it's six o'clock PM. This is the regular business meeting of Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting and tidling the weeds.
Pile the weeds stupidly. I don't think I have to say something.
Invisible with delivery and justice for all.
Thank you. Members present in both chair, Robert Lovinheim via Zoom, Supervisor Brian Barrett via Zoom, Chairman Jacob Bryan here, Township Manager Julia Heilica, Budget and Finance Manager Lucas Di Bartolo, Solicitor Ron Karasak, and our engineer, Missy Hutcheson, the level of engineers. We have no announcements this evening, but the first order of business is to consider the minutes. We have three sets of minutes, April 12th, May 10th, and May 24th. And a motion will be in order to consider all three.
Jacob, can I address you before you approve?
Uh, you can, you can make a comment after there's a motion and a second.
Slanders things you put in here, so I don't know if you want to approve this, we put it out for print.
Let's not talk about slander with you, Pam. Let's, uh.
No.
Excuse me.
Straight young man.
Excuse me. We're conducting a meeting. We're conducting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I hear a motion, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lovinheim, second by myself, any comments? No comments?
There's a lot of comments.
Yes.
If you have a comment, then you can make a comment.
All right, well, this is Brian, and very simply is, uh, I, I have a little problem with the wordage of, of these minutes. Uh, there, if you're gonna make a verbatim, that's fine, but you can't get subjunct, subjective and use words like derogatory or offensive about some individual, because that's an opinion of one person. And, and that's why I didn't vote to approve them.
May I speak now?
Pardon me?
He uses, she uses disparaging all through here with Ken. I guess because I've asked where Ken, has Ken done some things that he hasn't done? Uh, and when I asked you about the first big offer and stuff, I'm complaining. So does that mean any citizens in this township cannot ask anything or complain?
That's not true.
It's just me.
Yes, it, it is just you. You're so far the only one that behaves in that manner in our public meetings.
By asking you how a partner.
It's not about asking questions, it's about how you demean individuals that work for our township or serve our township.
Excuse me. I don't demean anyone.
That's not true.
And is not doing his job. I had a call yesterday from someone with, he lost the paperwork and he. He's not doing his job, so I guess what am I, should I tell him that they can't do anything or they're demeaning him?
No. They should, they should call the zoning officer if they have a complaint.
They did. He doesn't, I don't want to get into that. But she's going out of her way to use this language as slanderous.
Slanderous.
Yes, it is slanderous.
That's your opinion.
All right. Well, I take.
You know, if you think you can do, do whatever you want.
Can I, may I make a comment here? Please.
Mr. Love.
Hear me all right?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Um. In, in a way, I think I agree with Pam's comments here in that what we must be careful about is that in minutes, we don't make any editorial comments. And.
Amen.
Editorial, editorial comments can take the, uh, let's say the, the notion of what is said and try to make a comment that's either positive or negative on it. I, I think we just have to be careful not to do that. It's, it's really the basis of journalism to separate what is commentary from what is news. And I think in this case, we're reporting news, so it's just something we should be careful about. And I can, I can say that our, let's say, uh, transgressions here are no different than the New York Times, which I also find fault with. So if it's the New York Times or Smithfield Township, I think we just have to be careful about what we say. That's all.
Okay, but Robert, do you see any?
A lot of other trees too.
Robert, do you see any problem with the minutes as they're presented?
Well, um, I, I don't want to get into specifics, but I think when I come back or when I have a conversation with Julia who is taking the notes, I, I would like to talk about journalistic integrity and what the difference is between commentary and reporting.
That's all about this is we're not journalists. We're taking down minutes of a meeting where a woman routinely bashes people in a way that's not constructive, that is not, it's accurate to describe it the way that it is in these minutes.
It is not.
Yes.
Jacob, Jacob, no, it's opinionated.
How was it?
Goodness sakes. Good, better, and differently, it's opinionated. It's the opinion of one person. You, you don't have, skip that. You do the minutes. You say what Mrs. Barrett or Mr. Barrett or whoever said, and that's it. But you don't say derogatory or, or worse. It, it, you know, we don't need adjectives and adverbs.
I think it's fine to transcribe exactly what she said then.
Yeah, but I'm talking, she didn't, Jacob. What, what is being done is in the minutes, there are other, other variances, will you? That are put in there by whoever writes the minutes, opinions. Uh, and again, we don't need that. You don't need to, uh.
Opinions and they accurately reflect what happened. They can see the video.
Pam Barrett complained about the Kirkwood's, they heard in front of mine, what are you?
You complained about it.
What did I say?
You described that a lot of things that the Kirkwoods do or done without permits are inappropriate.
I did not, I said those signs need to be removed and be removed.
Timeout here, timeout, please. Would all of you, Pam, Ryan, Jacob, just trust me, because I was, I, I was schooled as a journalist to take on this matter and see if we can do better with it.
I'm in, all right, I trust you.
You know, what was the, what was, was that cans?
I trust a gentleman from Spain.
Thank you. Gracias. Good discuss.
We're gonna move on. We're gonna go to our.
They approved?
No, we're gonna consider them at our following meeting.
So they're gonna be tabled?
You do have a motion as a second on the floor.
That's true, Robert, you did second the motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, Robert motion.
Or he motion to approve them.
And then you seconded.
Do you still?
I'll second the motion to approve them with the caveat that I am going to try to make them more reportage rather than commentary in the future, okay?
Excellent, succinct.
All right, all in favor? Hi.
Hello?
I, I said hi, cast your vote, Robert.
I, I lost sound, I'm sorry, I lost sound. Hi. Yeah, yeah.
Nay. Seems like trust. All right, reports, solicitors report. What was that on there?
Yeah, Rob? Yes. The, the major work that has occurred over the last month has been dealing with the airstrip road condemnation. That declaration of cooking was finally filed, I believe, last Thursday. And that has been third upon the various individual entities or businesses. They now have 30 days, I believe, to advise us as to whether or not they agree to the condemnation or whether they want to file what are called preliminary objections to the condemnation, raising various objections that they think might apply. Uh, I have spoken or at least left a message with an individual who was contacted by Attorney Cantiger, who is the attorney for, um, Gannell. And I believe her name is Mary Ladoni or Ladone, L-A-U-D-O-N-E, of Ethan, who is in the process or is going to be in the process of preparing an appraisal with respect to the value of that land being taken because the county doesn't get it for free. They have to pay fair market. So we're gonna see what she says by what value so that that money is available to pay. So we're gonna see what she says by what value so that that money is available to pay, assuming there are no objections. Uh, and. Other than that, which has taken a, a major part of work with respect to my time in the month. Obviously, I also reviewed the sketch plan for the sheath, uh, which was discussed at the planning commission meeting. And also the. Plan for the first energy. Holy yard expansion, which I believe is on the agenda for later this evening, so I won't get into that. And other than that, you know, again, various email, various written over requests. Uh, the usual, uh, activities, but those have been the main items for me.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah.
Um, from, from your report, I, I gather that the train is not coming back. At least the train from Stroudsburg to Milford, correct?
Far as I know, it's not. Why? Was I supposed to have gotten some information on that?
No. Let's move on.
Okay.
Who said that? May I ask who brought that up?
What, the train from Milford to Stroudsburg?
Yeah.
I think it was a joke, Brian. And, uh, it might be dealing with the Water Gap matter, but you should know, in fact, let me all speak to that. The attorneys for Water Gap have filed a motion to reargue the case. Uh, before the Commonwealth Court. I just today filed an answer opposing that motion to reargue, so we will see. Uh, what, you know, what occurs with that, but you generally do not get reargument unless there are really special circumstances. And here I can't see where it's really special circumstances with the simple case where the use was denied. The trial court upheld it and the Commonwealth Court also upheld it and supported the township, so. We'll see, but if in fact that is the train to Milford to Stroudsburg. Let's just say it's still on the track, but I'm not sure if there's any steam in the engine.
Never had a train from Milford to Stroudsburg.
I don't want to be. Well said. Prolific.
Okay, all right. So please proceed with the engineers' report.
Um, Amy and John had a kickoff meeting for the, um, Green Mountain Drive Bridge for the whole amount of funding that the township received. Um, that was today, and then the other items are on the agenda later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The next is our consent agenda, which includes the advertising of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four material bid notice for, uh, road and road construction. The approval of the Digital Culture Web Posting and Maintenance Agreement, which is for our website. Uh, consideration to impose a special ban on fireworks at municipal parks, because that's not presently within the park rules. But we wanted to make sure that it is, especially in light of holidays. Authorized shifting the payroll week, Saturday, uh, Sunday to Saturday, as long as the bonus associated with that. And then the application certification of payment number two, waterfront park fishing dock project.
Jacob, uh, excuse me, but, uh, and to give my ignorance. The payroll is now Sunday through Saturday?
Right. Julia, do you want to run through that quickly?
Sure. Uh, Brian, this is what we. So the concept, because right now, the way the township payroll works is you actually.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I know the way it works, and I know you, but I, I just want to know. Is it now Sunday through Saturday?
That is the plan. We will be shifting it, so nobody has to guess their hours anymore. We believe that's an unfair practice and should be fixed. So what's going to happen?
Amen.
Yes.
Uh, I agree, and I've agreed for about twenty years. How about this? When does it begin?
Uh, so the plan, what we are going to do is implement a short payroll this upcoming week. So our new payroll starts Thursday the fifteenth, and everyone will, uh, let me pull up the calendar quick. Complete their time sheets until Saturday, June twenty-fourth, and then the new time sheet will start on Sunday, June twenty-fifth. From there, once this is approved at the meeting, all of this information will go out to all staff members affected. And, and we're gonna make it very clear and, and make sure that nobody gets confused as we move forward.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for that.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Barrett. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lovenheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi. All right.
Next is the consideration to award bid for menacing tree cutting, uh, which is, uh, to cut down the trees that were damaged by the beetle. The invasive species that is making some trails unsafe. We had a number of bidders, and, uh, the lowest came in RJ's Tree Service, uh, for bid number one, four thousand, and bid number two, forty-five hundred. Julia, do you want to describe the differences between the two bids?
Sure, and I do actually have good news regarding this as well. Um, we are doing this through a fund, uh, for a grant through the Open Mountain Visitors Bureau. The township received ten thousand and five dollars to help cut down these trees. Uh, column A is for them to simply take the trees down and leave them where they lie. Column B allows them to take a tree down on section, and so our township staff can more easily remove them. Um, as far as this goes, after receiving, uh, a bid, um. It turns out when the initial two people went through, we thought that there were a lot more dead trees than there were. After having seen everything leave out, uh, we were able to drop the number down. So we were stuck with about, assuming like, to, uh, adopt a forty-five hundred dollar, uh, bid for menacing park with twenty thousand dollars total on the table. Uh, I called EMVB and spoke with Marlene, and she said that as long as the scope remains the same. Meaning as long as the township continues to use the funds to cut down dead actual trees in township parks. We are allowed to expand the scope geographically. So we'll be able to expand this to cut down additional trees on the second half of menacing park on the western part of the roller trucks. We'll be able to cut down trees in Marshall's Falls, and I haven't heard back from Middlesmith Field yet. But we're also in the process of looking at what we can do at Mount Nevo. Um, so we've got a great opportunity, and EMVB has been very kind to expand those resources.
Okay, so we're going to award the bid?
Yes. Uh, uh, are we giving number one?
Uh, it would be number two, the forty-five hundred.
Number, so we're going to award the bid, uh, well, entertain a motion to award the bids to RJ's Tree Service for bid number two at four thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll take that. I'll take that motion.
Second, Mr. Barrett. Any questions?
Well. Has anybody made the motion? I'll make the motion if Brian is seconding it. Uh, but I'd also like to say that I think we should entertain a resolution at some point that, um. As with this case, when all things are equal, I think, um, we should favor, uh, residents of the township in these bids. As we have here with RJ Clark. Um, if, there's all the reasons in the world to say that, uh, if, if it's, um. A, uh, an equal bid, um, the people who live here should benefit from it.
Amen.
So. I make that motion, but, uh, please add that as a rider to my motion.
Got it. That, that question needs to be divided. It's, uh. You wouldn't have to do that separately, but we don't have that on the, uh, agenda, so that would have to be added for the future.
But don't be putting on a motion that you're going to accept the bid that might be higher than someone else just because they're a resident.
That, that is.
We will.
I didn't say that. All things being equal.
Right, that's what Robert said.
Okay.
All things being equal, uh, you would want to reward a citizen of the township.
Right.
With the work.
We don't have to, we don't have to make that resolution now. I'm saying that, um, I'm, I'm approving this, saying that we should consider a future resolution to this effect.
Sure.
And I'm okay with that.
That's not a problem.
Okay. Yeah.
Out. So who, who seconded that motion by Robert?
Uh, I have a motion by Robert and Brian seconded.
Okay, all right. Any question? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Next is authorizing advertisement for community engagement coordinator, which is a position that we budgeted for. Uh, we're not prepared to advertise it today, but this is just the authorization to advertise it when the board has had the opportunity to discuss this. So it's not hiring today, but it is authorizing, placing the ad, so we don't have to go through that process when at the time.
But we're having a party, having a party director, is that what it is? Entertainment director?
It is.
How much are you paying them?
It is not a party director, and that we haven't decided that. This is the authorization to advertise when we make that decision.
Well, up to the supervisor, is that his job?
Now, this.
It's the mayor. Too many. This guy is getting carried away with this. This is our money.
Sir, may I have your name for the record, please?
I, I forgot.
Richard Norris. I've, I've lived in this township my whole life, sixty-six years. I've never seen a township run like this. This is ridiculous.
What is the community engagement coordinator?
Right, I'd like to understand that, that, maybe I'm not smarter.
If the advertised for, what kind of a person are you looking to?
So, but that, that decision and the finalization of the job description being made by the board before it gets advertised. This is just authorizing the township staff to advertise it upon such time. So we budgeted for this position that essentially deals with reception, dealing with, uh, the park rentals. And, uh, about half the time, they'll be assisting the zoning officer with regard to permitting and whatnot.
It, it's unnecessarily modest.
Ma'am, may I have your name for the record, please?
Joanne Norris.
Thank you. And how can you vote on that to put it in the paper if there's not even a salary attached?
No, if we're not voting to put it in the paper, we're authorizing the staff to put it in the paper. So that wouldn't take place until the board has made the final determination on the salary range and the.
And the public gets no input on the salary?
No, that's not true. That'll be, that'll be before a public meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we're paying the person to do what, what.
That will be at a public.
Community engagement.
That will be at a public meeting.
Community engagement coordinator. So like, what is this?
Other positions have had it. I just described it generally, but we'll be looking forward to a discussion.
To meet somebody else to help do your job that will pay. You guys did it.
Not how that works.
Well, it sure sounds that way.
No, that's your opinion.
That's right. We all have, you remember that.
I do. Trust me.
Who, Jacob, who, who, uh, came up with this, uh? This advertisement for community engagement?
This was voted upon during our regular budget meetings at the conclusion of last year.
It was? Was I a part of that?
You voted against the budget, but you were at the sum of those meetings.
I don't remember a community engagement coordinator.
I think that was the.
Okay, we'll talk about it. I, uh. I don't think there's any need to advertise it right now.
Well, it's not advertising right now. It's the authorization to advertise.
I, I, right. All right.
Sir, this isn't an open discussion. If you want to speak, stand up, state your name, and when it comes time for public comment, you'll be welcome to say whatever you want to say.
Well, my, last time I.
John would just.
Well, now you are.
Right. Right, are you?
All right, do I hear a motion on item C?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Lovenheim, second by myself. Any further comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey.
Okay, next is a discussion on the state of EMS. We were previously asked by Suburban EMS to, uh, have the opportunity to make a presentation. They serve currently a third of our, our township toward Delaware Water Gap. Uh, Lucas is going to administer the presentation, but whomever would like to speak is proceeding.
I'll do most of it.
Okay.
My name is Derek Young. I'm the executive director of Suburban EMS. I'm also a township supervisor in Northampton County.
Right.
I feel.
Yeah.
Um. I have with me Tim Warkeizer, Operations Director. Dustin Thomas, Operations Manager for North, which is this area. And Brian Dunlap, who's my Director of Finance. And what we have here tonight for you is it's a presentation we've been making to, uh, the nineteen communities that we serve. So if you don't know, we do, probably gonna be in here, but we do fifteen, sorry, fourteen communities in Northampton County. And up here, we do Stroudsburg, East Stroudsburg, Stroud Township, Smithfield, Delaware Water Gap. Part of Smithfield. Um, and we certainly hope you're all happy with the service that we're providing in the heart of you handling. Um, so what, what I'd like to do, this is an, uh, overall thing about what's going on in EMS. Locally, nationally, statewide. There's things in here that, being the suburban, now I'm probably gonna skip over them. And skip to more of the higher level of the problem that's going on in the whole area. So while we're here, uh, Suburban has provided seventy years of service with minimal support from the municipalities. Smithfield does give us some money every year, which we appreciate. We, we accomplished this for many years, all the way up to right before COVID, maybe two thousand and eighteen or so, we started to have trouble. We used our non-emergency transport, so if you've ever been down in the Lehigh Valley, you will see on Route twenty-two. Our ambulances and our wheelchair vans flying, going up and down. We do a lot of hospital work up down there. We do a lot of nursing homework. All the six former Medicareers down there, plus many others. And up here, we do transport work for both hospital networks here and some other places. Basically, we used the money we made off that, offset the loss that nine-one-one is. So sitting around waiting for calls with emergency crews, can't charge enough, and you can't get paid enough to make it work. And the, the problem is, uh, we'll state it as I go through this. COVID made it worse, uh, for, and I'll talk about suburban. Uh, it really derailed us because the non-emergency work was essentially gone. Thank God for all the funding, PPP, all the COVID fundings. We got some COVID funding in Monroe County. Thank God for all that, or we would have been in major trouble. The problem in the, the system. You go to the next one. There, there's no sustainable funding for EMS itself. And that, that's causing the problem. Um, the, if you think about, I mean, you're facing many of the same things we are, where we have had. Highly escalating labor rates. And insurance and repairs and vehicle replacement costs. It wasn't long ago, we were paying a hundred and two thousand for an ambulance, and now we're paying a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And it all happened with COVID. Took off, it has not calmed down. It stopped rising now, but it didn't come back down. So. Um, and the, the, the other issue is workforce. Nationally, there's a thirty percent annual turnover rate among paramedics and MPs. We're slightly below that. We're around twenty-six or twenty-seven percent, but we used to be lower. We used to be in the low twenties, and it's been creeping up on us. The next bullet is the fact that on every billable nine-one-one call we do, we're about a hundred, a hundred dollars or more below cost. And that's because the, the system doesn't pay. So you know that we're billing Medicare and Medicaid and, and insurance for these things. Medicare doesn't care if we charge eight hundred dollars for a run or two thousand dollars for a run. They're only gonna pay us stated rates for the area. That's it. Medicaid is even worse. So that's part of what's really been going on. I already talked about the increasing wages, fuel costs, uh, bid beat us up for a while. It's getting a little better. Uh, this is a slide, this, this is, most of this presentation, uh, is from Donnie Doremus. Some of you may know him. I know Ron knows him from many, many days. Um, and, um. He goes out to the T-Sats and does a presentation. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it. Uh, not the fire one, but the EMS one. And it's really interesting, and what I saw when I was there about three years ago was. The room is filled with mostly rural communities that were really suffering, and it's been inching our way. And it's certainly, obviously, you know, the problems probably that Pike County's had, where they went years without. Any, uh, a paramedic service to cover the whole county. Um, and for a while, we put a truck up in Lehman. And for a while, we put a truck up in Lehman to try to stop us from running up all the way up to Lehman Township, Township and North. Uh, because there was nobody else there. Um, now Lehman's running. Hopefully, we don't go up as much. We go to the next one. These are just uh just some things you can refer to when you have time. It talks about what's going on. There's another page of these too. There's no need for me to stop on those right now. I don't want to take up that much time. Um, the next one is the good news about suburban. We are a nonprofit five oh one C three. We have a professional board of directors. Uh, our administration combined a hundred and twenty-three plus years of EMS experience. This means I'm really old. Uh, I've been at suburban for thirty-one years. I was the director of finance for twenty-five. And I'm the executive director for the last six. How many years, ten fifty?
Year or total?
Oh, twenty-five years in EMS, Justin.
Forty.
And Brian's new, he's the newbie. We have twelve of them from Gracile. Uh, when he, you're one year plus, one year. Um, so that, and and Donnie Doremus, if he was here, has more years than than I do. Uh, he was up at Medic Nine. Um, and uh, he came to us when Medic Nine merged into us down in Northampton County. We have physician medical oversight. We have a formal QIQA program. We started an education institute, tried to create employees. It's in the banker station. Basically, we have anywhere from four to I think that's the most we had, about ten. Four to ten students at a time. Uh, we pay them to learn. We pay them while they're her re- national registry test. Um, and it's the only way that I, we've been able to find to create any new employees. Otherwise, all we're doing is Debbie's people come to us, our people go to her. It's just, it's just goes around in a cycle. There's not anyone new coming into the system unless you train them. Just, you might get triples. The old days, we had twenty of people, but doesn't, doesn't exist anymore. A lot of community got reached.
Can I, uh, excuse me, not to interrupt Brian Barrett, uh, have you considered Votech schools?
So, uh, we do, uh, some work. And you want to talk about that? We do some work with the CIT down in Northampton County.
They have an emergency services program in their Votech. They have been working with us for the past year and a half. Due to the change in their leadership, we've been set back a little bit, but we're working on trying to get them a certification class in their high school. Go ahead.
Um, next, okay, you're already there. Uh, next page. We've been serving the community for seventy years. Started out with Wilson, West Houston, and Palmer, Northampton County, and then uh, came up to Stroudsburg and then took on the Medic Nine area. There's nineteen municipalities we currently serve. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand residents. And two to four million seasonal visitors annually. We have five, we actually have four stations, and we have four stations, Northampton County, and we have an administrative office in Palmer Township. We have twenty-three EMS vehicles. That houses both advanced life support, which is paramedics on a truck, or uh, basic life support, which is two EMTs on a truck. We have in-house, full-time administration, finance, and billing. And our billing does an excellent job. And glad we have them. I'm gonna skip over our net, the next slide, if you don't mind. It's it's direct about suburban, where where we're doing. I don't think that's what we're here for tonight. This next one is more informational. One of the municipalities asked us to show all the populations of what we cover. And so there you have it, if you have any questions about it. Um, the next one tells, so it shows a very large picture. This is probably true to all the nine-one-one EMS services. The the green uh, is the area of the trips that we build for. The green, the gray with the green box around it is all the trips that we can't bill for. So they are fire calls, standbys, refusals. Lift assist. Anything else? Got our major ones. Um, that we go.
Excuse me, excuse me a minute. I'm only getting the first slide, second-class township code. I don't know why it's not changing to the other things you're talking about and are being shown.
You wanted to stop the picture and resume? Yeah. Robert, Robert is just going to uh uh restart that portion that way, uh, you can hopefully see that without issue.
I'm not sure it can record beyond YouTube and screen share.
Yeah.
All of the thing that.
No, I think, well, it is, it is recording, but you have to scroll over to the other. There you go.
Robert, can you see that? Yeah, it uh, all of that.
Well, we can, I'll, I'll send it to Robert.
I can vocalize most of the rest of this.
Now I've got the good news screen. Yeah, now it's working. Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Alright, so that screen I was talking about, the the boxed-in area that are gray with the green lines is the amount of trips that we do uh that are non-built. You can see uh that percentage is pretty high. Uh, this is just more good news Donny put in. It shows our volumes. If you look at the bottom, the Monroe nine-one-one volumes have been increasing dramatically in the last couple of years. Uh, where where's uh Northampton? And then we don't even know why twenty-twenty-two dropped. We have all the same area. Um, but it dropped. Um, but Monroe obviously continues to build. And we we try very hard, Dustin spends a lot of time balancing his crews that are on. Try to get as much coverage as we can. The next one, we talked about the education institute. And the the bottom one there, it, oh, it's not there. Can you go back that one? So we were able to get a grant to cover one year's worth of education through Susan Wild's office. And that's pretty dramatic for us. It's a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Brian was working on the red tape to try to get us the money. We have a nice paper check, but no money. But we're working on the red tape to to get that. That is cer- certainly a big help to us in these times right now. So the last two are just about who's supposed to be uh providing the service. I'm not talking about Northampton County for a second. Uh, so you, well, first I'll talk about what happened up in Pike. In Pike, the um county county commissioners took the step, put up two mills of tax revenue, I mean, tax, tax mileage to match if a township or a borough spent that much money on EMS. Um, that is really awesome. They did it because they were worried about travel and tourism and not having coverage. Um, is really why they did it. In Northampton County, um, our county believes down here that it's a local issue and they're trying to stay out of it. And I know that we had some meetings with Monroe and Deb, I don't know where they are. Sorry. Where are those meetings now?
Uh, they will move forward once we have municipalities move forward. That's when they will come back to their.
Alright, so it it's it's kind of in between the two. And since, you know, I live this too. Uh, the township second-class code says that we're we're to uh include the appropriate financial administrative assistance for these services. Nowhere does it state amounts or demands. It was passed very vaguely, like a lot of our state law happens, and um, it hasn't really helped EMS. Part of the reason that we're doing this is we're gonna be asking all of our communities in twenty twenty-four to help, because not all of them do. And um, that's where suburban's heading. Um, and I think that, did I leave any out? He goes. Um, I think that's where I'll end it. I'm welcoming for questions if you have any.
Robert, Brian, any questions?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is that uh this is a very good presentation, uh very sobering. And um, to me, it just reinforces my questions about what the county commissioners are actually doing or thinking about this problem, which is all over the county. And from what I see, they can build courthouses that don't even have a door, but they can't get behind something which is an essential service, which is EMS to everybody in this county. And it's disgusting. And that's an editorial comment.
Well said. Well said. Very well said. And that's just a comment.
Yeah.
You have a question?
No, I mean, it's, it is sobering. And and like Robert says, this is everywhere. I mean, every municipality I've spoken with has issued, and I have a lot of friends that serve in different, like, one was the mayor in Bangor a couple of years ago. About four things really took a nosedive. So do you think that the county in Northampton will consider matching?
Nope.
Nope.
I know he's a good, well, he believes it's a local. He thinks the state should do it. They're not gonna do it. Uh, so he he believes it's a local issue.
Yeah, alright, well, yes, that's.
I'm sorry, who believes? Who believes it's local?
County executive in Northampton County.
Okay.
Northampton County, there is grant programs we get every year. There's some for EMS. But the, but we get like twelve thousand out of it, you know, when the numbers we need countywide are much, much higher than that.
Okay.
This definitely lots to steal on, and I know that we're certainly gonna consider every avenue. I think any day this month, we're expected to get the results of a survey back from JLN that does emergency services assessments for us. Price, Middle Smithfield, and Delaware Water Gap.
So they never came to us. They, I talked to them maybe six months ago. He said he would come back to us. Uh, because some of the things that he was saying to me, he was totally, totally off-base. I wish we would have the ability to get that straightened out. We've never been talked to.
I, I think there have been, I think there, to be fair, I think there have been health issues with the two principals of that company. I don't know where it stands now, but um their report was due to us sometime in the late spring. And um, I don't know when it'll come in now.
No, they they told us it was June, by the end of June.
Yeah, and Jacob, it might only be five, because they didn't talk to me.
They, they came to see us.
Yeah, they did.
Really not asking the right.
The pen and note to the other municipalities, because all of us went in together on on this trip.
I understand. Okay, thank you all. I'm always available for questions. You guys have my cell phone. Um, uh, sure, they can share with you.
Thank, thank you.
Well, that's certainly sobering.
Not good, not good news, Jacob.
Well, not gonna get any better, but it might, might.
Yeah, well, it has to.
Alright, another joke. Uh, so we have the emergency funding request by Bushkill Emergency Corps. We have a Debbie Killig here, Edward Green is here, and Lucas is here. There are numbers, so. Bushkill, you'd like to start? I mean, you sent us the letter, but if you had anything generally wanted.
We did have a, a meeting with the three townships that we primarily serve to explain the fact that we've had such a decrease in our call volume. However, as Jeff said, the cost is considerable just to be there to make sure that we're there when and if someone needs the ambulance. We're trying to uh fill our own uh staff as they are. And we're looking to supplement those folks going to school, but it takes over a year to grow a character. So they're not, they're not an overnight add water and shake, although I have asked the state where those people are.
Yeah.
Uh, and we are a freestanding EMS agency, and they are a freestanding a nonprofit agency as well. We've been here since nineteen sixty-five. So our uh, our call volume increased, the call volume decreased. The last, we have some volunteers, we're the only people with actual volunteers on the truck yet. However, that is a, a declining bit of personnel.
Yeah.
So we are, we're looking for some help until perhaps in the new year, as Jeff said, that we're asking the townships to consider that greater support as of the new year as well. But until then, kind of a tide over type thing. Okay.
Debbie, Debbie, from what I've read, you're asking through the end of the year, you're in the, actually, and the actually through March, but through the end of this fiscal year, it would be about, what, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, something like that?
Totally, yes.
That what it is, somewhere in that neighborhood, which is money we've never budgeted. And we don't have, except if we take it out of a general fund where it would otherwise pave roads or make improvements. I mean, this is, this is a situation that I think is just a crisis. I don't know what to do about it, but you know, it's, this township is being bled. And I'm not saying it's your your fault, because we just heard from suburban that they have the same problems. I don't fucking know what to do. Excuse my language. But it's just, it's intolerable. We can't afford this. You can't afford it. Suburban can't afford it. Where's the relief come from? It comes from the county, which is doing nothing.
Um, we certainly welcome you to come and sit for a meeting with us. Folks have been at the table with me where I've set up meetings with the county and we're there. And I think that they would uh appreciate being in a room with all of the municipalities as well.
I think so. You know what I think? I think they'd avoid the meeting.
Alright, Robert, just to be clear, the ask is, is thirty thousand dollars for right now, the immediate support that they've asked between Middle Smithfield, Smithfield, and Price. I think we have no choice but to do at least the very immediate assistance while we discuss with Middle Smithfield and Price. You know, what to do. Lucas ran the numbers. Do you want to talk about that before we?
Yeah, I'm glad.
I'm gonna pause you. Robert, just so you're aware, there are little ears in the room, so please be careful.
Okay, yeah, alright. Lucas, you're the total budget finance manager speaking. Um, so the supervisors are aware. Uh, uh, they've received my emails and conversations about, uh, you know, the the letter that we received from Bushkill EMS. Um, I did take the time and estimate our share of that uh funding based on the population covered by Bushkill EMS for Price, Smithfield, and Middle Smithfield. My estimate brought us out to thirty-one percent being in Smithfield, fifty-nine percent being in Middle Smithfield, and ten percent being owed by Price. So uh, based on that and the knowledge that uh with Bushkill EMS's current financial situation, uh, without this funding, we risk uh losing Bushkill EMS. Uh, and then we risk losing primary coverage for uh our township as well, Middle Smithfield and Price, which could be too high a response times, um, and have really negative consequences for our residents. So with that knowledge, I'm recommending that while we investigate our options, we at at minimum make a one-time contribution based on the ask letter received from Bushkill EMS for thirty thousand dollars. So our share of that is nine thousand three hundred dollars. And uh, and then.
For a month.
For a month.
For for the, for the first month. That that's correct.
He made this, he's making this record. He made this, he's making this recommendation about the immediate, you know, right now to get us that month to assess.
That, that, that buys us one month, uh, based on Smithfield's share. Uh, and then going forward, if we need to buy more months, uh, based on their ask letter, that would be eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And, uh, based on all the, uh, financials I've seen, based on all the knowledge I have, uh, you know, this is not a uh, request taken lightly. This is a, uh, necessary expense to ensure the uh, survival of Bushkill EMS. Whereas, uh, without funds, we risk not survival of Bushkill EMS.
And not having, you know, primary ALS coverage for ten thousand people.
Yes.
Plus everyone else that visits.
We're looking at hiring people. Only has this problem. I mean, can't we start cutting back?
That is.
I'm throwing the money from the vault to give it to them. Put that project on hold.
We cannot utilize state funds that are meant for a grant for something else that would not be.
We don't need more employees, or you can start cutting employees or cutting wages.
Well, we always, it was authorized to advertise, and then we don't need to cut employees. That said, I have no issue with Lucas's recommendation of at least ninety-three hundred dollars. Uh, for Bushkill, I think we need to do that request now, so we have time to assess with our colleagues from our neighboring municipalities.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, make that motion, but Debbie, uh, can you assure us coverage through the year?
With the support, we are, um, will stabilize, be able to do that, Brian.
Alright, and, and then as, uh, excuse me, Lucas said, uh, if we go along with that, we've, we've got a lot of hard work to do though in the coming months.
Sure.
Uh, for, for you, for us, for everyone. So having said that, I'm gonna make a motion that we go along with, uh, Lucas's recommendation.
Motion time, Mr. Barrett. I will second. Any questions?
I just want to confirm, uh, is, is that for the one month, or is that for, uh?
I'm interpreting it as the one month, but Brian, do you have a motion that's more than that?
The, the motion is for, initially, the first payment. Okay, and our percentage of it, and, uh, the monthly that would run through. I'd like to hear that again. I, uh, does it run through the, the entire year? And I believe it was thirty-some hundred a month. Lucas, am I right there?
So, so, so to confirm, so the, the one month June payment is nine thousand three hundred dollars. The July and onwards would be, our share would be eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And, uh, we would, uh, let's assume that nothing changed, that would be implemented, that would need to be implemented uh, through probably March of twenty twenty-four, because even if we implement a tax, the money doesn't get collected in that tax until the following year, uh, when taxes go out. So it doesn't happen in January or February. So based on that, um, that monthly total would add up to one hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars through, uh, through March twenty twenty-four. That, that's what that hundred and thirty-three thousand would take us through March twenty twenty-four for our share of the thirty-six thousand a month. Um, but based on the supervisor's discussions of looking in, into options and gathering more data, um, I, I, you say you tend to say, you know, we, we make the one-month payment and we will, you know, therefore, uh, reauthorize every month as, as needed.
As needed.
Right.
So there was a, the motion on the table is only for one month, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
There was a motion by Brian, and I seconded. So any comments?
Jacob, are you saying you're not willing to cut anything else?
That's not what we said. No, but this is, we're acting on the request they, they made specifically.
Okay, we've got to look at where we can get money from, you know, the director.
Sure, baby.
Maybe the supervisors should go back to two hundred dollars a month instead. What, you get an eighteen-dollar raise or something?
That's not true either.
Alright, look at.
Come on, alright, guys, right?
Um, I just have a question because I'm, I come from the city and things are very different. So you guys are a freestanding community based, and so are they. So who else provides ambulance? Do the hospitals provide ambulance service?
Other areas.
But, so you, you call nine-one-one, St. Luke's ambulance doesn't come?
They may come if there's no one else available. If they're out and we're out, then it just goes down with the tax.
And the fire departments, some of them have.
Then occasionally, but that's not their primary.
So there's no, there's no state or.
No, or it's not, it's not like the city of New York.
It can't be anything. So if you guys weren't doing this, there'd be nothing.
Right, if, pretty much. Well, we weren't here, then there would be nothing.
The city.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, that was one in the West End? Is it feasible to have to look at them, take it over?
Um, they're not looking to take on more loss. Quite frankly, the, the main of our, of our community out here is, uh, sixty percent of the revenue comes from Medicare or Medicaid patients. Thirty percent have no coverage.
The same way they can handle it better.
But they're not.
They don't want to take on their loss.
That's not.
So the subject ends up, the subject was up a lot, but it can get there, and, and the networks, both networks, support the local EMSs. Um, they couldn't do it alone. They don't have the staff. Uh, Saint Luke's does do nine-one-one in Pocahontas Township. But many times, we're going into Pocahontas because they're out there in transport. Lea Valley inherited, the O V H N inherited what we all referred to as West End because Pocahontas Hospital bought that three days before they merged into Lea Valley. But Lea Valley, even though they're getting that, and Lea Valley does have another ambulance service, nine-one-one and easy. And that came down to, it was only the two networks available up there, those are nonprofits that close. So, I mean, I'm sure, Lucas, you can talk to them?
Yeah, uh, I, I can comment that, you know, uh, based on the, uh, supervisor's request for additional data, I've reached out to uh, all local EMS providers to, uh, better understand the, the, uh, scenario, better understand what's going on. And also see if what they're willing to cover, how that would work, what they were charged. And there, there is discussions ongoing with, uh, you know, all the services regarding exactly that. But, but, but to clarify, that is, none, none of that, uh, occurs in any speed at all that would allow us to uh, not support Bushkill EMS that, that, that alone, basically, my.
I'll go one step further. I don't think the networks are coming. Uh, they have not, they have, uh, another area said they are not looking to displace the nonprofits. Uh, we, we, we provide them a lot of service and mutually beneficial. Um, they do good things for us, we do, we do good things for them. For both, both, both networks, I would feel are very, are very good to the, to the ambulance service.
And they're, they support us in the way that they can, you know.
We have.
Some of these supplies, that kind of thing. But personality to step in, they should be fine.
Just one more thing, as I raised, that one question about the fire. We have some firemen that are trained to be, I'm sorry, correct, right? They come to, they get the scene, they try to help with, before EMS gets there, or try to assist EMS, but they don't transport. Um, so it's not like the cities, not county around here.
Now, as the county doesn't put money, that's like crazy to me.
Hey, well, you often pay for everybody else.
I, when I referred to state law, that was second-class township code that I was reading from. If the owners got put on municipality, like I said, on my supervisor down the farm.
And I, I think the third service that, uh, is a freestanding is Pocahontas Mountain Regional, which is, uh, supported quite, uh, well by their municipalities. They have the tax on, they have, um, contributions being made to them to help support them. And whereas us at this end of the county, we don't have that support there.
What about going after big places like Shawnee, Johnny's G area, Calhoun, places like that?
Well, and, and, you know.
No, I think she means for funding, for funding.
I mean, it's gear, it's always using them, it doesn't contribute a lot of money.
I mean, they support by running, they ran a fundraiser for us. Yeah, that kind of thing. If you look at Leamington Township ambulance, uh, Leamington Township itself has, uh, scheduled that their budget for their ambulance service for next year is one point five million. This year it's two million. That's fully funding an ambulance service.
Yeah. Motion on the floor to approve the support.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. All in favor of the motion?
Hi.
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 Hi, thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to also say, this is a gathering crisis. This is one month we've just authorized. This has to come to a head sometime this year because we cannot go on like this and keep financing this way. And this is a county problem, and the, the sooner we get to the crisis, the sooner the county is going to have to step in and say something.
Agreed.
And Robert, Robert and Jacob, uh, I, I, I would like to see Lucas continue his work with, with, uh, the, with Debbie's group and see what we can do to make things somewhat better or sustainable.
You're, you're.
I know we've been putting a lot of work in now, and it's appreciated, but just to continue in his way.
Sure.
I agree, bro. I agree.
Thank you.
Next is the consideration of resolution number five twenty-eight, which is a lot joiner for one forty-one Roosevelt Drive.
So we had a we had a review letter that went out June thirteenth regarding the lot joiner. We had a comment, um, noting, uh, a discrepancy in a property owner, an adjacent property owner. The revised deed that we received today addressed that comment, so we don't have anything else.
So no issues with that lot joiner?
No.
Ron, no legal issues with the lot joiner?
I have no legal issues with the lot joiner. I mean, I would like to see uh, comments from the zoning officer and the sewage enforcement officer that this lot joiner is not going to create any zoning or sewage problems. In fact, the, uh, the form that is generally used for lot joiner, uh, speaks to that. However, other than those two items, I don't have a problem with. But I looked at the deed, it contains the appropriate unification and merger language. As I said, the only thing is I, I would like to see something from the zoning officer and sewage enforcement officer that they have no problems with this joiner, but that's just a recommendation. Supervisors make.
Conditionally approved based upon.
Can do that.
I see no problem.
Yeah, Brian, I, I think if you want to, when I say you, the board, then certainly conditionally approve it on condition that the zoning officer and the sewage enforcement officer has no complaint, so that it doesn't have to come back again on the agenda. It can just keep moving forward.
Yeah, so moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Levin. I'm, any questions? All in favor?
Hi. Now, how, how are we gonna do this? How will we follow through? Who will?
That'll be my job, Brian. Call it.
You, you got it, Julia? Okay, for both?
Yes, all the jobs you can and Scott tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any timeframe you need, uh?
Uh, yes.
No, not, not really. Uh, again, as long as it's okay with them, it's, it's fine with me. Uh, and when these come in, we have a lot on our plate when things come across the desks of the patch. When they come in, it should almost be automatic that then a copy goes to Ken, the zoning officer, and a copy goes to the sewage enforcement officer. This way, it's already in, in, in process for their review.
Got it, okay.
In fact, because I just got a call today from Attorney Worthington, or an email about the process for a lot joiner, and I gave him the Smithfield Township form that acknowledges what has to be done, the filing fee, what things he needs to do, so uh, it is something that we deal with on a regular, regular basis.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Next is the consideration for two oh nine Ravens Nest Stormwater waiver request.
So, okay, so, hi.
Hello.
Um. At the last meeting, uh, there was some you clarified that you could build within the easement for the golf course beside your house. We have no problem with that. Um, there are three waivers on the table. Um, the one is for a stream easement. Um, a waiver so they do not have to provide a drainage easement. Um, and the other two are with respect to the inner buffer and the outer buffer. Um, so the stormwater ordinance allows a waiver for development within the outer buffer for pre-existing lot, which we believe this is. Um, however, the, um, ordinance did not allow development or the development that they're proposing within the inner buffer. So that's their driveway, stormwater management, um, and some grading. So that would be the other waiver that's on the table.
Well, in terms of addressing those waiver requests, did you have recommendations on any of those? I know that the, the stream easement is, is relatively easy, but the other two.
Right, well, the outer buffer, I think because it's a pre-existing lot, um, I, I think the ordinance reads that if a waiver is I don't want to say acceptable, but, and, you know, would be, it would be acceptable, yeah, right. Um, the inner buffer is a little trickier. Um, there are certain items that are permitted within the inner buffer, like a park, or, um, I think that's, or, I think that's about it. Um, but they're providing impermeable areas, stormwater management, so. Um, I think that's up to the board. Yeah.
Good question. Did you receive the, the body's drawing?
I did, I did receive the revised drawing, and, um, you did, it does show that it's limited within the inner buffer, but you're still proposing disturbance within the inner buffer. Um, and I guess our, our, you know, the driveways and that, you know, how, how could they access their lot?
Right.
Impermeable service, right?
Yes, it is, Brian.
Well, boy, I look at, I, I think, uh, the property was purchased before the, uh, Act one-nin. Is that true?
Your, what year did you purchase the property?
We purchased it in twenty twenty-one. It was approved as a, uh, subdivision was approved in two thousand and five.
So I, I'm guessing, um, I believe your ordinance was adopted in two thousand and six. Um, so the subdivision went in, was approved prior to the ordinance, but then it was purchased after the ordinance.
Yeah, that makes it.
Ron, any legal?
Well, obviously, uh, a waiver is granted when the board believes that there is a hardship that was not created by the applicant to allow them to do something that they might otherwise not be able to do. Provided the, what you're allowing them to do is not going to cause some ripple effect.
That's what I'm asking. It's not likely to, to impact any of the flood insurance or any of those.
I don't think so, but I, I don't know that. I don't have that information in front of me. Ken, as the floodplain administrator, should be opining with respect to that. Uh, my concern is if you allow someone to. construct in the then someone else may come down the pike six months from now and say, well, you did it for them, so you better do it for me. And then someone else comes down the pike and someone else, it would be easier if the project could be redesigned.
Yeah.
So it doesn't affect the inner buffer, but I don't know if that can happen based upon where driveways are in the home.
Right, because of the.
I I think it can be done. I think it could be done with that property. To recon.
Ron.
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian. Sorry. Brian, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, no, saying that I believe it can be done in within the inner boundary and we grant the waiver for the other. But on the condition. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So that that's it.
Okay.
Solving with your designer.
I feel I feel similarly that we can approve both and that if necessary, we attach some sort of proviso saying that um this is a specific situation that we're approving. It does not appeal a a a it 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 does not um attain to other situations that might come along that are different.
There is no question.
I disagree there. Robert, uh I could probably sit down and do the same thing and and mimic it, you know? Uh, you're giving away your short, your short uh boundary. And I think maybe, maybe they can reconfigure that part of it to coincide with the with the rules and and allow them to uh go ahead with the uh outer bu- outer uh one fifty.
Missy, what do you? Because obviously Brian and I are trying to find a way that these people can go ahead and do what they want to do and do it legally, but what what is your opinion about how they can reconfigure?
So I, yes. The the wet, the inner wetland buffer takes up the entire frontage of the property. So relocating the driveway would cause the same disturbance as where it is now. Now, now, when I say same, I don't mean in acreage. I just mean that it would still cause disturbance. I don't know if their designer could reroute the driveway to cause less disturbance.
Yeah.
Are we worried about that?
Yes. So we went from, I think it was fifty one hundred square feet, the original design of disturbance, and it's now down to uh three thousand four hundred and twenty eight.
Within the inner buffer or total?
In total. So uh the driveway went from, I think it was fifteen hundred square feet and it's now down to nine twenty five. So we did reduce it drastically. We took the garage and we placed it under the kitchen, so we no longer have a freestanding garage. It's incorporated underneath the house.
Have you spoken to your engineer about it?
About? About uh redesigning?
Yeah, to make it more compatible.
Um, yeah, so they they reduced it about uh fifteen, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred square feet. The footprint of disturbance has now been reduced to three thousand uh four twenty eight instead of five thousand one hundred or thirty two hundred square feet.
Has there been any alternatives though for the driveway? Because I think that's the most.
I tried to purchase the lot right in front of um in front of the home, which is no one's using, no one's building it, and they wouldn't sell it to me. I did not know that there was wetlands. Um, you know, as soon as you enter, I didn't know anything about um.
You were never told?
No, I was not. I purchased a lot from International Custom Home Builders. And I, international custom home builders.
Uh huh.
From New York, I don't, I didn't know. I I thought I was purchasing something here. Yes, and I have spent a lot of money on this already and I mean, not that it's your fault, but.
No, no.
There is no question that if in fact the board is gonna consider granting a waiver, that it'd be made part of the minutes in the record that it was the absolute minimum waiver that could be granted, that that's just fact specific.
Right.
So someone cannot come in and simply say, well, you did it for them, you did it for me, unless the facts are very specific and are the same fact. So that's following up on what Robert said with respect to that. And um if in fact they have reduced the disturbance, as they've already indicated.
Right.
They can't reduce it anymore, then you as a supervisor have to decide.
Right.
Yes or no?
Well, it's essentially similar to a variance. It's the minimum relief necessary to allow the actually.
I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion that we grant a waiver um on the conditions Ron will uh fill in here so that it becomes very specific.
I I do have one more idea.
And Missy. Missy.
Good, Brian.
Yeah, would you be able to uh verify that the uh the changes that they're asking for are presented to us, all right? Specifically.
Yes, then that that was trying to be my next comment, that the plan that was recently submitted looks like it's an overlay onto the survey plan.
Yes.
So you need to create a revised survey plan showing the house and the driveway and the reduced size.
Okay, there's a mo- uh there's a motion on the floor.
And also, also, it would be very helpful if you could show those disturbances you talked about, the the driveway within the inner buffer and then your disturbance within the outer buffer. So we know what kind of numbers we're working with.
We'll add that to, we'll add that to the waiver.
Okay, well, we're gonna vote on the the waivers individually. Just to be clear, so this will generate, the new plan will generate another review letter, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and would that be the third one?
No, it will be the third review.
Yes, okay. Okay. So.
What you might want to do, Mr. Chair, is, and I don't mean to delay these fine people, but wait until the new survey comes in, make sure our engineer has looked at it and there's nothing early about it, and then put it on the agenda or vote that.
Oh, Ron, I have a motion on the table.
Oh, that's fine, you do.
It includes what? It will be your definition of the waiver to make it very specific. Okay?
Well, I I can.
These people have been, these people have been here before. This is enough.
They have been here a couple of times.
Enough for who? Let, do it the right way. We've gotta do it the right way or we're gonna the whole damn thing will be, once it's said, it'll be useless.
Brian, these are citizens of our township who just want to build a house.
What if, what if they want to rob a bank? Our citizens.
Okay.
Robert.
If they want to rob a bank, we'll make another motion.
All right. Okay, all right. So I'm.
Yeah, you what, you know what, you would. You would. It's not, all right, I, do you have a motion?
Yes, there's a motion by Mr. Loveheim. Uh, to be clear, that motion is, what?
Motion would be to grant the waiver based upon the fact-specific items, the revised survey and other matters that were discussed during the course of this item.
Okay.
Then I would prepare.
And the matter discussed with Missy and her firm.
Yes, that's, that was included in the aforementioned motion. Okay. I will second the motion. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. So we will be in contact.
Is that for all waivers or is that just for the inner buffer?
Thanks.
I just want to make sure.
That was just the.
That was just for really the inner buffer. Should do another motion for the other two.
Correct, correct. So I was received it. No, it's it's, it's okay. It's easy to do. All right, so the stream easement, uh that waiver request number one, that when you had no conditions attached to that, okay. Do I hear a motion on the first waiver, the stream easement waiver?
Yes, motion.
Motion by Mr. Loveheim, second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, inner buffer was the uh second one, so the third one is the outer buffer.
The outer buffer.
Um, do I hear a motion to approve the third waiver on the outer buffer?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Loveheim, second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote.
Aye, two one. All right. So we will be in contact with you so we can uh get this settled.
Yes, and you'll forward us, you'll forward us the new plan.
Yes.
And then we'll review it and provide a new letter, and if we have any questions, we'll.
There'll be a form I'll send you to sign off to confirm that you agree with what we thought about tonight. All right, thank you. God bless you for here.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next uh item is the consideration for the resolution number five twenty nine, which is the fee schedule update, which is essentially the only changes being made are with regard to Selda, which were in consultation between our township manager and our engineers at Bubble Engineering. It simplifies uh the matter and establishes uh better escrow process for that. It basically simplifies what was about six or seven varieties of the same thing.
Yeah.
In uh the older one, so. Any questions on that?
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chair, with your permission, uh is that on the subdivision section two, uh where it adds a third bullet point when the balance of the professional escrow account falls below five hundred dollars, the account must replenish, the applicant must replenish the account back to the original escrow amount. I would add that, and in the fault thereof, all action on the plan will cease or terminate. For that effect, that there'll be, I will do it, the the language that our township manager said that, and in the fault thereof, a stop work order will issue on that project. This way, that is very clear. No one can say, well, it didn't say that. You could have stopped order, just said that.
Right.
You had to have me pay more money.
Okay.
I would add that.
I think that makes sense. We approve, um, would I hear a motion to approve resolution number five twenty nine with that exact change, maybe?
Motion to approve five twenty nine.
I'm Mr. Loveheim, second time myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, so we'll have that revised shortly. And next is the consideration for the first energy pole yard expansion. Uh, I believe we have someone here for that, so thank you for coming.
Good evening. Uh, Scott Miller with Spott Stevenson McCoy. Um, we had presented this plan at the planning commission meeting. Uh, we are asking for a waiver of the land development process for a small expansion to their pole yard uh at their existing facility. We're actually reducing the amount of impervious by approximately three hundred and sixty-five square feet. It basically just expands one area with a retaining wall, small retaining wall, and then uh fixing a gravel area with paving and bringing it up to grade. Um, the planning commission had made a recommendation for that that waiver. Uh, also, there were two stormwater waivers that we were also looking to to get because the um area and the limited um development doesn't allow us to do a full expansion that we feel it's not necessary for stormwater management facilities for this expansion.
Yes, so there were two waivers. Um, one is for water quality and the other is for groundwater recharge and like um he stated that the proposal is for a small extension that includes a retaining wall, um, a small area being converted to lawn, and the rest of the gravel area is being paved. So you're really going impervious to impervious with some some lawn area, so.
Right.
Both of those waivers for water quality, groundwater recharge, he had known. So, yeah, sure. Um, we did have a third comment to do, fear and honor.
Yes, I did. Uh, we actually drove and looked at it before I got here. There is actually, there was water in the bottom, so I couldn't verify that there was existing riprap at that location, but we will try to do that, but it's also, I would, I'm fearing that if we go in and start putting the riprap in, it's gonna um basically rip up the entire area because it's all stabilized now. So.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so. There's no erosion. It's actually a drainage ditch.
Okay.
So I will send you pictures and then maybe we can verify that, but
Yeah.
we feel it's not necessary, but if there was an erosion issue, obviously.
Okay, yeah, do you send those pictures uh that can confirm that? No, we don't have it. I will look back. That comment could go away or you.
Okay, and I think the only other thing was is that you were, we would need post-financial security. I think that was one of the things. Are we waiving that as well?
The the recommendation of the township planning commission was that the professional services agreement be entered into, that the fee agreement be paid, that the township engineer approves of stormwater plans, and with those three conditions, they recommended waiver of the land development plan. Now, again, you as the board of supervisors can add more conditions, take away conditions, or do something different, but those were the three that the planning commission recommended should be done uh in which, in order to waive the land development.
Right, and so that that uh recommendation by the planning commission is all inclusive of those two waivers then, correct?
Uh, yes, it also included those again, as as long as a township engineer, you know, approves a stormwater plan, obviously it dealt with also those waivers, but they made very clear that one township should enter into the professional agreement, get the fees that are required, and make sure the township engineer approves the overall stormwater plan.
Okay. So do you want two motions, one on the waivers and a second one on overall waiving that wind out with process?
Uh.
I'll make a motion. Are we ready for a motion?
I'm in shock.
Make a motion to to approve uh based on the planning commission's recommendations.
I'll second that motion.
Better than that. Motion by Mr. Loveheim, second by Mr. Barrett. Question?
I don't have any questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, sir, you'll get a a form or something from me to sign with respect to those waivers. Uh, and uh, I'm not sure what address we're using, but let me just see what I have here on my plan.
I might. One of my business cards, if that helps.
Yeah, that helps. That'll work. Again, there's plan, the address is here for reading and other places, so I will make sure I get it to the right place.
So that way it makes sure that it gets to me correctly as well.
Yes. Again, it'll be a form to verify that the waivers were granted, including the land development. All right, Mr. Miller, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Great.
Okay.
So next is something we've been speaking about for a couple of meetings, which are community contributions. I think for the the sake of simplicity that we should maintain last year's level right now because by now we would have already made our contributions.
Yeah.
According to the budget and finance manager, the only substitution I would have is one, we continue to include the uh Robert, is it the Center for Independent Living or is it, or the Center for Vision Loss?
You're talking about the Center for Independent Living, Lehigh Valley?
Yes.
Yeah, Center for Independent Living, Lehigh Valley. It's um uh a um a nonprofit that um supports all kinds of uh disabled people and um does all kinds of outreach and retraining, and they were very um uh involved in the building of our uh and design of our uh fishing dock. So I I think it would be nice to reward them with something. We've done that in past years.
Oh, right, we've done that the last several years, and then also uh it's been requested by several folks to uh fund the Pocahontas Animal Welfare Society this year rather than awesome due to their ongoing labor issues and the fact their clinic is still closed. So it doesn't necessarily benefit residents to support that at this time, but I think that that's that would be the most reasonable approach so we can take some time next year and have a have a a more detailed process uh for it, because I think we donated to some really great organizations like Broadhead Watershed Association and whatnot, so. Yeah.
I'm not Pocono Heritage Land Trust.
I mean, I, I have no.
And I don't support them.
Or me?
I don't support the land trust anymore. I think that if land is acquired, it should be for public parks, not for being sequestered away as somehow sort of open space. I think it's a, it's a concept that whose time has come and gone.
Well, I totally disagree. So is that why that's not on there? We've given to them. I know you've had a problem with the director over there, and I guess because of that I'm on the board. Uh, I think we should consider it. They do good work, by the way. Really good work.
I, I just. I just. I'm against it.
Alright, well, I'd be amenable to dividing the question and maintaining the rest of what we've discussed and then voting separately on PHLT.
Well, I don't, I don't believe in the organization anymore. I'm against it.
Okay.
I would vote against. I, I want to say something about this whole issue, because I.
Robert, alright.
Okay, I want to.
Understand what you're saying.
No, I want to say something about the whole issue of, of charity.
No, you don't have to.
Because I said.
You don't have to. I know what you're going through and what you went through.
I've said it publicly.
Alright.
Wait a minute. I've said it publicly, but I think what we should do is continue this year, as we have for many, many years, to give to charity, but if it's possible, maybe we should put on a ballot proposition in November saying, what do people think? Do they want to continue this? Do they want to do it a different way? I mean, this is.
Well, that was, Robert, that was suggested. It's a good idea.
Yeah, anyway, that's all I'm saying.
I think this is to review what type of referendum we can put on, but I know that uh, there's kind of limited discretion for that, but i- if, if Robert, if you want to make the motion to continue as you just said, and then investigate that other option, I would like to entertain that motion.
Well, I won't entertain a motion that contributes to the Pocono Heritage Land Trust.
Vote on that separate.
You, you want to make a motion?
I will now make a motion, which includes a contribution.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Alright, well, how about we have one motion for.
We have two motions.
Said, and then we will take the second motion.
Okay.
Alright. Do I hear a motion to continue last year's contributions with the provision for pause and the Center for Independent Living?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Love and I'm.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Ryan, I understand you'd like to make a second motion.
Yeah, that we include the, the, uh, Pocono Heritage Land Trust Fund with a contribution. We've done it in the past. We have a good history with them. And I believe that we should at least give something to recognize them and the good work they do. Now, Robert's against it, and I, I, I think I know why, but let me just say this. Robert's one vote, so my motion is made. Robert's against it, right?
Right, yes, but do you have a dollar amount for your motion?
I'm, so my motion is made?
Right, but do you, do you have a dollar amount? We could contribute for five hundred, for a thousand, for two fifty, what, what do you want in your motion?
Oh, uh, a reasonable amount. What do we give in the past? Two fifty, something like that?
One thousand, I believe we gave in the past.
Yeah, one thousand in the past. What would you like?
Well, at this stage, right now of the year, uh, two fifty would be fine with me.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Okay, good. That was done. Um, alright, MS four requirements, not those specific you want, his fun presentation.
It'll be a quick one.
Sure.
You want if I sit here or you want me?
No, you can totally, totally sit there and Lucas will administer the slides for us.
Hello? Hello?
I'm seeing slide.
Okay.
Can we get through this?
Yes.
Amen.
I'll be quick.
End of slide show, great.
Alright, Lucas, let's just do that in the full screen in the tab, so that'll, that'll work. Alright.
Good, moving.
That's good.
I, you can just go right to the second slide. We know what this is about, okay?
Yes.
So the MS four program is a collection of storage sewer structures, including basins, ditches, inlets, and piping that are designed to collect and discharge stormwater into streams without prior treatment. In two thousand sixteen, the township was required to apply for a permit through the MS four program due to existing high-quality streams and the population density. Uh, this permit is, has an effective date of September first, two thousand eighteen, expires August thirty-first of this year. Um, a renewal application was submitted to DEP late March, so we're still waiting to hear back from them. Um, since the effective date of the permit, Level Engineering Group and the Township have partnered to comply with several permit requirements, including the six minimum control measures, control measures and sediment load and pathogen reduction. The township is currently in year five of the five-year permit, and the five-year permit ends June thirtieth. Um, there are six minimum control measures. Uh, number one is public education outreach. So if anyone goes on the township's website, there's an MS four tab that has some public education. MCM number two is public participation involvement. That's part of this meeting. That's what we're here presenting for. MCM number three is illicit discharge detection elimination. Uh, the township is required to do outfall screenings twice in the five-year permit period, so they've done them twice within this five-year permit period, and we found no concerning substances, sheen, or runoff, anything like that. MCM number four and MCM number five, they go together. It's for construction runoff controls and then your post-construction runoff, so your filter socks during construction to stop um, dirty water leaving the site, and then your post-construction is, are your basins that you have continuously after, after the project is complete. And then MCM number six is what we'll discuss specifically tonight, and that's pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal facilities. So in the permit, there are three three best management practices under minimum control numbers, minimum control measure number six. The first one is to identify and document all operations owned and operated by the township that are within the MS four area. So this includes this, this facility, the building and the public works facility, um, any open space or parks. So we did create a map of those areas as required by the MS four program. And that, you can see that map there, smaller version of it. Uh, best management number two is to develop, implement, and maintain a written O and M program. Um, and I've, I've spoken a little bit to Julie about this. The township should create an operation and maintenance program. Um, our, our goal is to commence that next year within year six of the permit, and we would start with the public works facility, so that, that operation and maintenance program would, um, you know, if there's a spill, what does a township need to do, those types of things. And BMP number three, uh, develop and implement an employee training program that addresses appropriate topics of the MS four program. So they do already, the public works department does already provide training every year. Um, and that's submitted to DEP, and, and so far they've had no comments, so that training must be acceptable. So our next slide, I'm sorry, I haven't told you which slide to go to.
Oh, good.
Okay, so the year five report goals. Um, we have written programs for each minimum control measure to document how each is being satisfied. We will provide a list of newly constructed and or proposed best management practices that can reduce the sediment load. We will provide a list of fluid and control measures, including any sources of pathogens that are found. And we hope to provide proof of the stormwater management ordinance, that report, that the stormwater management ordinance has been updated to be consistent with the model twenty twenty-two DEP ordinance. And then if there's any questions or comments, um, otherwise there's, the township has great information on the website. Um, to.
Put this on there.
We, yes.
Something else?
Thank you.
I, I think, I think everything in this, Missy, is pretty obvious, and I think we've been pretty good about uh, carrying through on, on most of it. So, uh, uh, I, I can only say that it's a lovely presentation, but it, to me, it's sort of like, okay, let's make more work for the Environmental Protection Agency to put out these rules and these, uh, these edicts, uh, which of course are unfunded, and we're supposed to do all the work, at least.
I, I don't, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait. Robert, what are you saying?
I'm saying that the ED, the Environmental Protection Agency puts out these edicts, but we're the ones who have to do it, and we're not being paid by them to do it. This is another piece of unfunded legislation. And I think we're doing pretty well with stormwater, and we're following through pretty well. And I think if you look at Missy's presentation, you can check off everything in there and say, yeah, we're aware of this and we're doing it. But the whole idea of the MS four is just to create work for more bureaucrats.
Alright, that said, I think, Missy, you and Chris, the table the Act one sixty-seven discussion, so.
Yes.
Our next meeting, so. Anyway, you're just to table the Act one sixty-seven update. Either of you hear that?
Missy?
We, we, Doug and I have discussed the Act one sixty-seven stormwater update just today, and we will prepare um, a new version of the ordinance supervisor to review.
Gordon, we do, I can table that discussion till our next meeting.
Amen. That's a yea.
Okay, alright. I'll second that. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I didn't hear Robert's vote.
Stained.
Okay. Um, then the next was Regional Planning Commission concept, but I, I think that we haven't had much time to digest that, and I think it's worthy of at least the same type of presentation that we got earlier. But Lucas reviewed that and he sent us some information, so would you all like to table that until our next meeting?
I would like to table it.
Do I hear a motion? I move the table that discussion till the next.
I made a motion, yeah.
Okay, alright. I make some motion. I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I've stayed.
You like him. Any comments for the Board of Supervisors report?
Oh, yeah, Robert. Robert, what time is it?
It's, uh, about.
What time is?
Quarter to two.
Oh, my God. God help you.
Alright, uh, next we have the pension of the bills.
Let's pay the, let's pay the bills.
Okay, so that's two hundred seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. That includes the extensive funds from the state for Marshall's Falls Park, um, co-op construction, as well as fees to the control center for nine-one-one.
Uh, motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second, Mr. Love and I. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, two, two o'clock in the morning?
Yep, and I'm, I'm still going strong.
I know you are. No, I know. I know you are. But we're done. Alright.
That's because they ate dinner in Spain at ten P M, so that's why he's okay.
Yeah. Hey, in the old days, you'd call in, we'd keep you three o'clock. Just for the hell of it. Just for the fun of.
This is better.
Oh, God. Well, enjoy.
Thank you. Public comments? Are we ready for public comments?
Yes, we are.
Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go, go ahead then.
Yes?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, uh, I'd like to bring up something that I think needs some study or some advice on how to approach this, and it comes from the fact that uh, the planning commission has been given a sketch plan for development at the corner of, uh, of four-four-seven and, uh, two-oh-nine, which is now the, the old days-in property.
Yeah, for the gas station, Robert?
Yes, and it, it brings up a question uh, that has been bothering me, that has nothing to do with more development there. It has to do with that intersection right now, which is Brown Street and four-four-seven, leading to two-oh-nine. And what I've found myself is that in busy periods, it's almost impossible now to make a right-hand turn from Brown Street, crossing the first lane and, uh, and Independence Road of four-four-seven, and getting into the left turn lane, lane to go on to two-oh-nine. And I, I must admit, uh, I've, in many instances, taken to turning into the parking lot through the rear entrance of the, of the, um, what is it? Um, the, the ESU center there, and then coming out on Independence, so I can finally get into that turn lane. Uh, I think the situation is getting worse and worse, because look, we're getting to be more of a, of an urban area. We have more traffic, and it's probably a place where we need a light. We need some light that can control that traffic and at least put cars that are trying to turn left on to two-oh-nine into the right lane. I don't know how we urge PennDOT to do that, whether it's a traffic study that we perform or that we somehow get PennDOT to do a, a traffic study. But, um, it'll even get worse when these people apply for an HOP for, uh, an entrance on to um, four-four-seven Independence Road, that's really an extension of Brown Street. Whether they're successful or not, I don't know, but even without that, the traffic is terrible there. So I'm really throwing this out, saying, how can we affect this? How can we push PennDOT to, to do a study? Or how can we do a study and give it to PennDOT, saying that we need a light there?
Robert, look, can I say something?
Sure.
I've been involved with this for probably seven or eight years.
Only?
The guy, really, when they first came with their plan, I, I thought to myself, it'll never work. And then all of a sudden, now they want to tear down the hall they had, build the sheets and. But I, I've thought about it. I talked to, to PennDOT. I've looked for, for advice. And that's, it's a. that's, it's a tough thing. A light is the only way, but who pays for the light?
Well, that's, that's the question, Brian. And I'm saying that even if this development with sheets and so forth doesn't get built, this problem is really bad as it is right now.
Anyway, yeah. And that, that crappy half a lane that's supposed to merge so you can turn. That's, that's crazy, you know?
So
You're right.
And I feel that trespassing into the innovation center to go through their parking lot to get onto four, four, seven, just so I can find a way to get to the right lane to, or the, I should say, the left lane, which is the right lane, to make a turn onto two oh nine is not a solution. So we, I think it's something that we as a township have to push PennDOT to look at. And I'm not sure what the procedure is to do this, but you know, this is, it's, it's just a fact of life. You can't get there from here many times during the day. It's just impossible.
Do you want to talk to District Five then and meet Ron Young or something like that, Robert? Do you want to contact them?
Contact who?
Ron Young at District Five?
Maybe. I'm looking for advice here.
Who, who's going to contact them?
I don't know how to, how to get PennDOT to move. Maybe we talk to our representatives. I don't know. I, I'm throwing.
Start with our reps. Robert, start with our reps. And then maybe a meeting, we go down to five, District Five. I've been there many times. And there, they've got to have some kind of solution. Or we're in trouble.
Yeah. And then.
I'd be more than happy to help out on that.
All right.
Yeah, but my, my mind, I'll tell you what, I, I'm not kidding about six, seven years ago. And I, I've been thinking about it since then. And all of a sudden now it's come to fruition.
Well, traffic just keeps, traffic gets worse there. It's not getting, but it's getting worse.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have to build gas stations within a mile. Yeah, you keep planning to build all that stuff.
That's not, that's not the township's decision.
Well, maybe a little guidance. I mean, I thought the pet was going to put you in a nice place and put in a wall wall. Now we're going to have a sheet.
That's the responsibility of the developer. Is that your public comment? We do have influence. They do meet, but I mean, this is the first sketch plan that we got about that. So we don't have, it's not about what we like personally or not. It's not what the, what this town's planning code permits.
It's not an easy. It's not going to be an easy workout.
It's not. It, it's not, I'm, what I'm complaining about is not anything to do with the plan that these people are proposing. It's saying that the situation now intolerable and we've got to find a solution.
And we compound it. Robert, we compound it if we, if we go forward.
Yeah.
Is Robert, is Robert, Robert, are you there?
I'm here.
The situation, as Robert said, is it, it's, it's not workable now.
Right.
With, with this new proposal, it's, I, I don't know how we can, we can handle it. Can we refuse, can we refuse it?
Brian, I don't either, but I'm not speaking of, of the proposal. I'm speaking of the situation that exists right now without this proposal, just in the traffic on Brown Street, trying to get on to
No, I know.
Left-hand turn.
I know.
Solution.
You write a letter to PennDOT and then we'll hear other public comments.
It should be a front zone on the developer. I mean, I'm sure.
It is the, they have to meet the burden. That, that's all PennDOT that deals with that. We, we deal with the actual site, but PennDOT has to approve the highway occupancy and all of that. So that's all on PennDOT, not the township.
And the light too.
In that hole, in that hole, yeah.
Anything else?
In that whole area. Well, I guess what I would say to Robert was, do we go further into the rabbit's hole? And okay, another development that we know we can't, we can't service or can't be serviced. You know, we've got to sit down with them.
Brian, but that's not my, that's not my concern right now. My question or concern is just the traffic that really exists now. And as Jacob says, anything that has to do with future development is going to have to go through the PennDOT process and get a highway occupancy permit, which may not ever happen. We don't know. But even if it doesn't, the situation where there I think is, is dire right now because it's.
It is. We don't want to make it worse is what I'm saying, Robert.
Yeah, definitely.
Robert and Brian, I, I was at the planning commission meeting that discussed this, this project. An applicant indicated that they needed for a PennDOT scoping meeting, which will require township comments and also we couldn't be at that meeting. And so can township supervisors. So that would be one step toward, you know, explaining your concerns. I know the planning commission definitely talked about that intersection with East Brown Street. So an applicant is aware.
Allen County is aware.
I'm willing to go to any meeting as long as I'm not in Spain.
All right, well.
If I were you, I'd be in Spain. It's, I got to talk to you about Spain.
All right, any other comments?
A motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, second.
Finding or being disparaging, but I did have a message from a friend who sent a package. Your wife.
All right, I'm out of air.
They lost the package. When he called back, there was all this mumbling, rather it was for a debt. Ken kept mumbling, well, I don't know if you need a permit or maybe you do need a permit. It wasn't rectified, so they called me for help. Now I guess I'm being disparaging to Ken when I say that. So I.
It's a fair fact what you just said.
So how, maybe you can handle it. Talk to Ken. The other thing is the fence on Motors now, three times I've let you know. I went down the hill the other day and a car backed out, couldn't see. I almost took it dead center. It's an eight-foot fence right out to the road, but then I'd say a foot of the road. You can't see both tenants on but I mean, both houses on both sides can't see. So I know you don't have a fence ordinance, but there's got to be something in there that you can block the view.
We can take a look.
I mean, I, I, I guess I'm complaining, but I do value my life here. So I complain. Now, what happened to the signs down at the Shawnee side? And that's not because I have anything against Shawnee, but they shouldn't be there.
Can't speak to what happened. Was there?
No. See, it's back then. The only way I got that cleaned up was to call up to the waste authority.
Sometimes they have the appropriate agency to deal with something. I don't remember the specific complaint that you're referencing.
Well, you have this written, so if I ask about anything, I'm complaining.
No.
That's the way it sounds.
And it uppers township people.
And one thing, may I just ask, clarify this, you're unwilling to, to cut back anything or look at taking anything away to save money, help with the ambulance?
No one said that at all.
You said you wouldn't cut that one position or party manager.
It's not a party manager, but we can discuss that at some point. But we're, we're going to be discussing all the options to make sure. We don't want to lose Bushkill. We don't want to lose primary ALS.
And I don't want to, and I don't want to see people saddled with more taxes. I want you to sit down with a red pen and start doing some work.
I'm not exactly sure what you're supposed to cut, you know, the roads to pay for EMS. Are you supposed to cut? There's a lot of.
Right, well, property have we done?
Don't think that.
No. Part of me, but not.
This year's vote has been done. When we're done last year, this year's.
There are a lot of things we could say, but you need to look, you can't sell the people.
I, I've seemed to have lost audio.
Me too.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Brian.
We also.
I think I made a resolution to we
We can discuss this.
It, we have to stop. It, it just has to stop. Money's never gonna stop. Can we get a six-month report on the financial standing of the township? I mean, I'll be probably, yeah, but people would like to know.
I, I, I would need to know what this report would be.
Halfway through the year, I would assume you want to look at, you looked at it too, don't you?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Who was the SEO here? You were saying before that you needed somebody, I think she has to speak with the zoning and SEO and.
The township zoning officer is Scott Brown of Hanover.
Sewer, horse grounds.
SEO?
Yes.
It's Scott Brown?
Yes.
From Hanover Engineering.
And my other question was about all these, where was it? The community contributions that you guys are all talking about. And you said, we'll keep it the same as last year or something.
Correct.
Is there like a list of who you do donate to, like different organizations that, that something like on your website or? I doubt, but I mean.
It's not, no, we have, we have a list, sure, because they're, they're always part of the, the bill pass.
Year, so whatever. And then, you know, and then we see like the bills are two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Right, well, a hundred and sixty-five thousand of that is, is, is grant funds being spent that we received from the state. So the, the normal expenses in there are not different than they would normally be.
And what is that? How often is that two seventy-eight?
How often is it that much? No, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand every two, every two weeks that we pay.
A hundred and thirty thousand every two weeks?
Yeah, just about. And a lot of it is reimbursable based on a legal fee. So if somebody files land development plan, they're going to reimburse us. They have the, they have an escrow agreement now. So we draw down on that and pay ourselves back when that happens.
Yeah.
I, I can comment that all of our expenses generally stick to our, our budget and our, our budget is published on the, on the website.
Yeah, and it's a letter on there too, on the finance page.
You might look at it.
And the previous audits too.
I look at it every month. So you're saying the one sixty-five was from a grant and what was the?
For Marshall's Falls Park.
What is that? Is that where a house was on the churn?
Yeah, I mean, that is where the house is, but that portion is not what this grant is specifically. This is site preparation, the boardwalk.
Money spent there at this.
I think it's fine to straighten the turnout, the road.
I mean, why was so much money spent there?
So that's.
Township money.
It's not township money. We've received grant money.
About ninety percent of it is, is state funds. We've had limited matching funds and different in-kind services that contributed against the match. So that reduced our burden.
What kind of income do you get from that or just enjoyment? I guess, I don't know.
The, the parks don't generate income necessarily.
The expense.
Right, well, it's, it's to protect that.
A lot of money into the flood plain, laying down along the river that constantly gets flooded. I, I think you should all to lay off the, the wetlands a little bit. Because you keep getting flooded time and time.
We're not investing funds into causing any issues with wetlands.
Why was the house, you were in such a hurry for the house that we had to pay a realtors commission and give away Ken Grant and it still stands?
It's set to be torn down.
Well, see, so you're going to pay somebody to tear down a house that you just bought?
That's paid for on the grant. We weren't going to be able to open the park period without having the closure of that driveway. And the only way to do so. So that was necessary.
I do think though, a lot of these parks, you need to take a hard look because they finally developed, they put things in there that just aren't practical plants. All kinds of things, like that whole bank down in Mystic Park was planted with a lot of flowers. Nobody, nobody wanted to wait that people stole the flowers. And then are there some, are there some kind of wood carvings or something that costs like seventy-nine thousand?
Also paid for by state grant funds and they're, they're not wooden carvings. They're sculptures.
Don't be paying with your feet, you know.
Okay, just seems like a lot of money that goes out and our taxes go up and, and we've been here and you know, we're trying to build a nice future for our children, but it just seems like what are they going to be left?
Live here sixty-six years. And I believe my property to my children and have something that they can live here without being destroyed.
No one has any intention on destroying it.
Now you guys are doing a good job.
Well, appreciate your thoughts, but there's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Barrett and Mr. Lemon. I'm seconded, so all in favor.
You're calling in only because I'm seventy-two.
I did not call you at all. You can get the transcript. Videos are all on there.
That now you're saying that the sheets would have to go out with four forty-seven, but the hotel or Holiday Inn or whatever never went out the four forty-seven?
No, that's, that's not my understanding at all of the sketch plan. It was the sketch plan for the sheets and the exit was on to two oh nine.
May I make a suggestion, Mister Chairman? May I make a suggestion that you carry on this discussion, this, you carry on this discussion after we adjourned because it seems to, to be largely about a development that we have never seen, that has only gone in sketch plan to the planning commission and has never been presented to the supervisors and will not be for, for many months yet. So we can't have any opinion on it, period.
All right. Well, I'm going, we're going to vote on our motion to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned to eight oh seven. Good night, Robert.
Good night. Good night, everybody.